...and advertising errors, so they are back on the agenda for final passage again. Council File Number 16363, Official Ordinance 382023, and Ordinance Amending Official Ordinance Number 802005, known as the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Erie by changing the classification of the parcel 185173107 from C3 Reserve for Downtown Central Business District only to C2 to correct a previous zoning map error. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Flores, the Council File Bill Number 16363 and now known as Official File Ordinance 382023 be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Throop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 382023 again by yeas seven nays zero. Council File Number 16364, Official Ordinance 392023, and Ordinance Amending Official Ordinance Number 802005, known as the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Erie by changing the classification of the property located south of East 33rd Street between McClellan Avenue and Bird Drive, parcels number 185173103, 185174101, and 185174102 from C2, which is general commercial, to R1 Low Density Residential. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16364, now known as Official File Ordinance 392023 be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Throop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 392023 by yeas seven nays zero. Council File Number 16365, Official Ordinance 402023, and Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $1 Million from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the Expenditure Thereof. Funds are granted from the Pennsylvania DCED Local Share Account for Wastewater Treatment Plant Disinfection Systems Improvement Project. Sponsored by Mr. Keyes, seconded by Mr. Throop, the Council File Ordinance Number 16365 and now known as Official File Ordinance 402023 be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Throop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 402023 by yeas seven nays zero. Council File Number 16366, Official Ordinance 412023, and Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $500,000 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the Expenditure Thereof. Funds are granted from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Local Share Account for Downtown State Street Traffic Pedestrian and Cyclists Improvement Project. Sponsored by Mr. Keyes, seconded by Mr. Throop, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16366 and now known as Official File Ordinance 412023 be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Throop, Mr. Witherspoon. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 412023 by yeas five nays two. Clean that up a little bit. Council File Number 16367, Official Ordinance 422023, and Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $500,000 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the Expenditure Thereof. Funds are granted from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Local Share Account for Multimodal Transportation Fund Program, State Street. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Throop, sponsored by Mr. Keyes, seconded by Mr. Throop, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16367 and now known as Official File Ordinance 422023 be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Throop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 422023 finally by yeas seven nays zero. Council File Number 16369, Official Ordinance 432023, and Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $245,000 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue to be received from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. The funds will be used to carry out the Downtown Erie Active Transportation Project through the Transportation Alternative Set-Aside, TA Set-Aide Program. The funding will be used to add work, bike lanes, to add bike lanes, crosswalks, and a wayfinding signage system throughout the city's trail network. Sponsored by Mr. Throop, seconded by Ms. Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16369 and now known as Official File Ordinance 432023 be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski.
No.
Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Throop, Mr. Witherspoon.
No.
Mr. Nelson. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 432023 finally by yeas five nays two. Council File Ordinance 16370, Official Ordinance 442023, and Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $450,000 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the Expenditure Thereof. Funds are granted from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Local Share Account for East Lake Road Reconstruction and Traffic Signal Replacement. Sponsored by Mr. Keyes, seconded by Mr. Throop, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16370 and now known as Official File Ordinance 442023 be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Throop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 442023 finally by yeas seven nays zero.
Moving on to ordinances for first reading. When Lori catches her breath, sorry.
Council File Number 16371, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $613,648 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the construction phase of the City of Erie Milling and Asphalt Resurfacing, Federal Aid, Local Routes, Various Streets, Penda Transportation Alternatives Program Grant Agreement, R22010007 and R2201006, and ECMS 119002. Sponsored by Mr. Throop, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the Council File Ordinance Number 16371 haven't been read as hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Throop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16371 by yeas seven nays zero on first reading. Council File Number 16372, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $7,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Funds are from the LERTA fees collected in the Community Reinvestment Fund. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores, the Council File Ordinance Number 16372 haven't been read as hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Throop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16372 by yeas seven nays zero on Council File Number 16373, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $18,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditures thereof. Funds are from the LERTA fees collected in the Community Reinvestment Fund. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores, the Council File Ordinance Number 16373 haven't been read as hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Throop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16373 by yeas seven nays zero on Council File Number 16374, an ordinance providing for the creation of a City Revitalization Improvement Zone, CRIS, authority under the provisions of the Municipality Authorities Act of 1945, Act of May 2, 1945, PL 38253 PACSA, Chapter 56, as from time to amended, for purposes of designating a City Revitalization and Improvement Zone, CRIS, engaging in and financing the construction, including related site preparation, infrastructure reconstruction, or renovation of facilities within the CRIS, for purposes of taking any and all actions and performing any and all duties authorized by a contracting authority as defined in and authorized by provisions of the Tax Reform Act of 1971, Act of July 9, 2013, PL 270, Number 5272 PACSA, Article XVIII-C, as from time to, as from time to time amended. Providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the severability of the ordinance, and providing for the ordinance shall the effect as provided by Pennsylvania law. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores, the Council File Ordinance Number 16374 haven't been read as hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski?
Discussion?
No.
Discussion?
Discussion.
I want to address a couple things. I like, I like the subtle comment of power grab on this one. I do appreciate the recent work in the last, well, in the hour before the council meeting that the mayor has adjusted the list, and I believe Senator Loughlin adjusted the list as well. So there's been three adjustments since it was put in the newspaper. At this point, the two competing ordinances have seven out of the nine names that are the same. This isn't a big difference when we're talking about a well-qualified board. And as far as the suggestion of a power grab on this one, the most recent change included bumping off a good friend, well-qualified, he's even donated to my campaigns in favor of someone that I don't know. And I'm excited about that change because it brings people to the table that are well-qualified that I don't know. I'm excited about the breadth of this one. And once again, as far as it being a power grab, I, I've brought people to the table at every stage of this to build consensus. I was called into an office. I asked if I could bring multiple members of City Council, I was told no. I asked if state representatives would be there, I was told no. I was told that they were not invited to this table, and then at that table, I was told I was invited to the table to be brought on board. From there, I brought two members of City Council while extending the invitation down the list, seeing who was available, to the state representative's office. They had been offended to find out the 5-4 break from the newspaper. That's how well people are being brought to the table in this conversation. I'm not here to manufacture consent for you, I'm here to bring together consensus. We need better leadership than that. So I came to the state representative's office after they made a suggestion to the governor that they supported a CRIS but that they were concerned about the makeup of the board, bringing with me Suzanne Faulkner and Mike Keyes, having invited down the list, Mel was busy with basketball, I was on vacation, Jasmine, you know, I brought who I could. I made them a, a deal that I thought was good, and I think Suzanne and Mike had choice words for me because they didn't think it was good enough for council. I agreed, I was like, all right, I'm just president of City Council, I'm just here to build consensus. And then I brought that to Jasmine as the vice president the next day with the solicitor. I told her my first suggestion, she said she agreed with the other two and that I was being an idiot, being so nice to other people. She gave me that nod. And then we wrote this up with the solicitor. The names on this board, I just don't want them to all come from the same tables at, you know, same two tables at a gala. I want it to be a little broader. That protects the future of this for the next 30-something years. Now, we could vote both of them up and we could work on this for two more weeks, but this is the first one we're voting on today. Do I have any other discussion from council?
I'd like to add to that. I appreciated being brought into this conversation. A CRIS, for those of you who don't know, is a 30-year decision. I'm 34 years old, so this will affect the rest of my working life in Erie, when I hopefully can retire when I'm 65, if I'm not still working three jobs. So I appreciated the fact that there was a larger discussion with the legislative body of this city. We've heard through the press conference and through the newspaper articles about one voice, but we here are the people of council. We are the elected legislative body of the city and the people of Erie. The manufactured one voice is that of a state senator, a city mayor, and a corporation. The more voices at the table, the better. I will be working for the rest of the time that CRIS is here. We have to have as many people at the table because we don't know who will be at the table after we are not here, or in these roles. It could be someone who is an extremist. We have to protect against that. We have to ensure that we have broad representation. I am disappointed, and quite frankly offended, to not have been a part of the conversation with the mayor and the state senator. I would have loved to be a part of that conversation, I know every member of this council would have.
I'll go. The problem here is the mayor and senator called a press conference before City Council was allowed to do the job our citywide community elected us to do. We on council are responsible for the best interests of our whole community. I owe no favors to anyone, I am not loyal to, I am loyal to my voters and my community at large. The ordinance council person, Mel Witherspoon, drafted as a favor for the mayor and senator with a second from council member Ed Brzezinski should sound the alarms to our community. Council President Nelson and council drafted the first ordinance with the City of Erie council members and our state legislators agreeing on all parts of everyone who deserves to be at the table and on the board. I will not be strong-armed into being a rubber stamp because you all made backdoor deals and need to make good on those favors that you owe. Erie has to think about our future, and as a 30-year-old minority Latina woman, all I think about is the city's future. I do not believe the Good Old Boys Club is going to give our Erie city community any different results than the last 30 to 40 years. You have been running our city to the ground. They have bled our community dry, and Council President Nelson drafted an ordinance to bring the city to the table, and that is for economic development. And we have this overreach of power happening before our eyes. The community of Erie can no longer be bled for the benefit of a selected few. We are the worst place for African-American people to live. We ranked fourth, but we now rank 15, but nothing got any better. It's just the numbers changed a little bit. We have the poorest zip code in our country and state, we have 44% child poverty and a housing crisis we continue to ignore and want to wait till later to address. Our city carries a deficit each year, and once ARP funds and our water reserve funds are gone, we are back to borrowing money each year to balance our yearly budget. That grows larger each year with this current administration. Our city cannot afford to allow for the city council's elected officials to be left out of the conversation in the appointment process for CRIS, which will last 30-plus years. We have people trying to make decisions for our city's future when most of them might not even be a part of the conversation. I will not be a part of selling my community out. People over corporations, it's not rocket science.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Council File Ordinance Number 16374 haven't been read as hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski.
No.
Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. Keyes.
Yes.
Mr. Throop. Mr. Witherspoon.
No.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes. It's 5-2.
City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16374 by yeas five nays two on first reading.
This next one's redundant, I'd like to make a motion to pull it, or...
We talked in caucus about having both of them up.
I'll second your motion.
Don't do it, Ray. Don't play your game.
I would just say technically they're identical except for number section five, so the appointments part is what we talked about, that's the difference between the two of them. Just so that's clear on the record.
Given the 5-2 nature of the vote, that secures us, I think, I think it's a...
What I'd also say is this is a first reading, so technically it's not a final ordinance, either way, so if both are passed or both are not passed, I'm just, whatever happens, it's still first reading. That's all I'm saying.
All right.
So are we motioning to remove it from the agenda, and I'm going to take a vote on that, or are we reading it?
We could just vote to remove it, right? Is that five, that takes five votes, though, and to table it takes four?
I think you can vote on any way you want.
Okay. All right, let's just vote for it, then.
Clarify, we're voting on it?
On this ordinance, we're voting on the ordinance, no tabling, no pooling, we're voting on this.
If I can take one second?
Yeah.
I looked into the eyes of the CEO of Erie Insurance Exchange, and I asked him one question. I said, "Where are you at?" Erie Insurance is the corporate leader of this entire CRIS situation. He says if we don't go with the 5-4, Erie Insurance is pulling out. I've never known Mr. Nacastro to tell me a lie. I don't think he started it today. So I, the reason why this was seconded by me and put on by Mr. Witherspoon. We're playing a game of poker. Our esteemed president is calling a bluff. I hope the hell he's got the money to back it up. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
No?
Any other discussion?
Part of the resolution and arguments dealt with appointments to this new authority. Who will appoint who and how many appointments would you get? To me, the appointments are not as important as weighing the possibility of this not going through locally as well as the state. I'm in my 20th year serving the city, and I've never asked my appointments to vote on something that I wanted to see happen, whether it was the Water Authority, Civic Center Authority. I appoint, appoint the individuals who were intelligent and have the concern of the city on mine and in their hearts. So once the appointment is made, anyone who want to interrupt the thoughts of the appointees have a political game in mind. We're looking for individuals with a specific talent. They were chosen. I don't need an appointment. They are all qualified. I spoke to one of our state representatives. He said he didn't care either way, he felt it would go through either way. He did say that he would like to have a seat at the table. He even said he would bring his own chair. This is the beginning, hopefully, of something positive for our city. The representatives will be brought in if it goes through. It is my opinion, and my opinion only, that the resolution that I'm sponsoring is the best for the city. I have nothing to gain other than the benefits of additional dollars coming into the city None of us will be here eight, nine, 10 years from now, at least not up here.
What?
Yeah, I don't want you. Now, you can calculate that any way you want, okay? I won't be here. It will affect the city as a whole. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, in caucus, I asked if we could pass both ordinances to give us another couple weeks, at least hammer it out the right way for everybody to be happy, and I got silence around the table.
Yeah, we're capable of doing that.
Silence around the table usually means yes. You have to speak out for a no. So I assumed wrongly, or rightly, we'll find out in a minute here, that both ordinances will move forward.
I think the last vote demonstrated that you, that you're not concerned with both ordinances moving forward, you're only putting one of them forward.
In this ordinance, I am, but it's wide open to, open suggestions that brings the people with the money to the table.
Yeah, so I mean...
That's my concern.
We discussed in caucus that we can bring both of them forward. That was affirmed, that that's legal at the first reading and that there's no redundancy. And then two people voted against the first one, so they're not looking, not everyone's looking to bring everything forward. And I think some people are comfortable getting a stump tonight, so that we can build consensus for the next two weeks instead of...
I'm saying with two weeks, we at least find out exactly where Erie Insurance Exchange is, and if we don't have Erie Insurance in, in the CRIS, might as well forget it, because they're the biggest corporate.
If they don't like money.
That's right.
I mean, talk about what kind of economic driver this is. If you don't like money, you can walk away from the table. All right. Call for the vote, Mike says.
I have to read it. Council File Number 16375, an ordinance providing for the creation of a City Revitalization Improvement Zone, CRIS, authority under the provisions of the Municipality Authorities Act of 1945, Act of May 2, 1945, Public Law 38253, Pennsylvania CSA, Chapter 56, as from time to, as from time to time amended, for purposes of designating a City Revitalization and Improvement Zone, CRIS, engaging in and financing the construction, included related site preparation and infrastructure reconstruction, or renovation of facilities within the CRIS for purposes of taking any and all actions and performing any and all duties authorized by a contracting authority as defined in and authorized by Article 18C of Act 2 of 1971, known as the Tax Reform Code of 1971, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the severability of the ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect as provided by Pennsylvania law. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance 16375 haven't been read as hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner.
No.
Ms. Flores.
No.
Mr. Keyes, Mr. Throop. Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16375 by yeas five, nays zero, nays two on first reading. Okay, we have one item in old business. Resolution sponsored by Ms. Flores, seconded by Ms. Faulkner, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that pursuant to the provisions of Pennsylvania 47 PS 4461 in a public hearing held Wednesday, July 5, 2023, the requests for the transfer of Pennsylvania Restaurant Liquor License Number R 21202 from Johnny B's Restaurant LLC, 37 Vine Street, Northeast Erie County, Pennsylvania, to Fifth and Peach LLC for restaurant facilities within the City of Erie to be located at 425 Peach Street, City of Erie, Erie County, Pennsylvania, be hereby approved. Mr. Brzezinski. Ms. Faulkner. Ms. Flores. Mr. Keys. Mr. Troup. Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Nelson. Resolution passes, yea seven, nays zero. This takes us to new business.
Move the balance.
Any separations?
Move for a separation for one, two, and three.
In new business. Any other separations?
What was separated?
One, two, and three in new business.
Okay.
You're good?
I think we're, I think we're good.
Okay, moving the balance of the agenda. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. Resolution Number One, sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Ms. Flores. City Council of the City of Erie Human Rights Resolution. Whereas the City of Erie welcomes diversity and believes that all individuals in the City of Erie shall be treated fairly, with respect and dignity, and with full human rights. Whereas the population of the city consists of people of every race, ethnicity, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, ancestry, age, disability, source of income, marital status, and familial status. Many of these people are discriminated against in employment opportunities, public accommodations, education, health care, and housing. Whereas the City of Erie strongly supports the treatment of all individuals with respect and dignity, regardless of an individual's race, ethnicity, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, ancestry, age, disability, source of income, marital status, and familial status, including but not limited to the areas of housing, public accommodation, education, health care, and employment. Whereas the City of Erie recognizes and admonishes the increasing legislation denying respect and dignity, particularly on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity across the United States. In the current 2023 legislative session, 491 such bills in 46 states have been introduced and many passed into law according to the American Civil Liberties Union, ACLU. This record number of bills, including three in Pennsylvania General Assembly, infringe on human rights and restrict fundamentals like health care and education. Whereas, in this hostile environment, cities, counties, and states across the country are taking steps to support and protect lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and gender expansive people, especially youth. A 2022 survey by the Trevor Project, a suicide prevention group focused on LGBTQ+ youth, found that 86% of transgender or non-binary youth reported negative effects on their mental health stemming from the political debate around these human rights issues. And nearly half had seriously considered suicide in the past year. Whereas the City of Erie is a welcoming environment to all and seeks to serve as a refuge of fairness, respect, dignity for all individuals and families. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Erie City Council firmly states its commitment to protecting human rights for all individuals and believes that access to health care and education is a fundamental right to the, to all people in the City of Erie. Be it further resolved that if Erie County Government, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, or United States Government passes a hostile human rights law that imposes criminal or civil punishments, fines, professional sanctions on LGBTQ+ individuals or any person or organization that serves the LGBTQ+ community, Erie City Council urges the police chief to make enforcement their lowest priority. Be it finally resolved that the City of Erie be considered a safe place, a sanctuary for LGBTQ+ individuals and families. Discussion?
I want to thank everyone who came out to speak tonight. By my tally, it looks like we had about 25 folks come and speak on this issue. So thank you genuinely, and thank you for sticking around on a Wednesday night. I know I have a 9:00 AM meeting tomorrow, so we're all going to be a little tired, but thank you in the name of human rights and being on the right side of history. I appreciate you all. This is something that did not simply come out of what I'm now going to call, after someone said, the fiasco at Blasco. This is something that is, is a movement. This is something that is necessary in a time when families are being made to be refugees in our own country. These are our fellow Americans. We do not know what will happen in the future at the state level and at the county level here in Pennsylvania. We can hope that it is always a welcoming place, but we can never guarantee that. And that is why I have chosen to be proactive instead of reactive in this moment. I, I also want to affirm that we, the LGBTQIA+ community, are not an organization or a lifestyle. We are humans. And so I, I hope we don't have a lot of more discussion. I think we've heard a lot. And like it has been said, there are no dollars tied to this. There are, there, there is nothing of harm in this. It can only truly prevent harm. That's all I have to say.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
I agree completely with what Suzanne just said. It's a very, very, very important thing. But I also believe very strongly that it's the communication. Now, I know if I took this list, LGB, right down the line, and asked out there, you could probably tell me what every one of those names meant. But if I walked on the street or if I walked around City Hall, I don't think I'd get the same answers. And what I'm talking about, and that's what my later resolution is, is to put it on the ballot so that you folks can get your story out. Let everybody know what it's all about. You know, when I was your age, queer meant one thing. You were odd. You understand what I'm saying? Vocabulary changes as the years go by. And I'm as guilty as anyone, but I'm trying very, very hard to learn all these things because I've always been an educator. So I'm not naysaying this. I'm going to vote with her on this. But I want it to dovetail with mine, with hopefully putting it on the ballot so that we can educate the city, educate the people. Let them know that you folks are real people, for God's sakes. That's the story. You're never going to be heard by taking a big hammer and slapping somebody in the side of the head. They're just going to recoil and they'll hate you forever. But if you interact, help us interact. We could have public hearings to explain each one of these. I'm not sure what binary is, to be honest. I'm not, you know, I don't have a thesaurus or a dictionary to help me with all of it.
Google's free.
Pardon me?
Google's free.
She's just.
Google's free. All right. I would rather talk to people that could help me with it. Anyway, that's all I have to say. And with that.
Any other comment?
Do you think we can go forward?
I think that's a, I think that's, I think that's a, a good range of comments right there, reflective of the broad range of views of this council. I, I can appreciate those. Mr. President? Yes.
When I, I guess for the last two or three days, I had no idea which way I was going to vote. Because like Ed said, I can't tell you what the letters mean. No idea. But what I do know is that growing up in Newark, New Jersey, there was a young man named, named Richard. As Ed said, you know, well, Richard was different. He didn't play football with us. He didn't play basketball. He didn't box with us. He just played jacks with the girls. So we felt, you know, Richard was going the other way. But Richard never bothered anyone. One day, someone started picking on Richard. And I didn't like it. So I took care of business my way. And eventually, Richard was accepted in our community as Richard. Fortunately, he wound up in California, in Hollywood, being one of the seamstress for Michael Jackson. Then there was another situation. People look at me as a ex-basketball player, but I was a better boxer. And there was a sparring partner, real good. I had no idea he was gay. Very tough guy. And at a party one night, one of the other guys kept picking on him. I told him, I said, you better leave him alone. I said, you know, he, he'll hurt you. That sissy won't bother me. He knocked, well, the sissy knocked him out in a short period of time. I tell you that because I listened to all the comments tonight. But I also need to tell you that I had an Uncle Saul who lived in the South. He had 11 children. They had to work the farm. And they moved to Chicago. His wife came home one day, found him with a partner. We found out Uncle Saul was gay. But I never stopped calling him my Uncle Saul. My point is this. Folks are who they are. And I judge individuals based on how you treat me and how I treat you. I don't care what you are. Have no, no idea, don't care. You see the two individuals that dress alike and ride their bikes all over town? JJ is my nephew. They don't bother anyone. So, Mr. President, my, my point is we allow all foreigners from all countries to come in. We provide them with free medications, free this, free that. And we have folks here. Their choice of way of living, that's their choice. As long as they don't bother anyone. But what I don't want to see that this group receives special attention, then that's not fair to the rest of the citizens. Whatever laws on the book, let's protect them as well. Now, if we're going to put additional laws on the book, I suggest at budget time, you put in extra money for additional police officers. We have a SWAT team, so we're going to have a team specifically for that. So these individuals, it's their choice. They are human beings. They don't bother anybody, far as I know. So with the citizens who spoke today gave me an answer. And I believe in giving everyone a fair chance, I will be voting yes.
Any other comments?
So this may not be popular, but I, in good conscience, can't vote for this as long as there's references to minors within the context of this. Because there's lots of things minors cannot do. And the biggest decision of your life needs, needs to be made with informed consent and with a mind that's able to fully understand the gravity of their decisions. Psychology itself has, actually has a plethora of, of research, to include the research that allowed the juvenile lifers to get possible ability of parole that the brain of juveniles are not fully formed even before the age of 18. They're estimated somewhere between 21 and 25. And so I think that, I believe everyone live as they would like to live, but in good conscience. You know, I understand there's medical reasons for having things done earlier as opposed to later. But for the protection of the people who honestly, you know, for the, for their protection, I, I'll be voting no.
Any other question?
Yeah, call for the question.
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. Keys. Mr. Troup. Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Nelson. Resolution passes, yea six, nays one. Resolution Number Two, sponsored by Ms. Flores, seconded by Ms. Faulkner, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that Erie City Council supports Wabtec workers of UE 506 and UE 618. Whereas, Wabtec workers consisting of 1,400 members of UE locals 506 and 618 have been without a contract since June 9, 2023. And whereas, as of June 22, 2023, the members began to strike immediately after rejecting Wabtec's final offer of massive concessions, including continuing the wage progression system, which takes 10 years for some members to reach top pay. And whereas, a substantial wage increase eliminating the wage progression system, maintaining health care benefits, maintaining vacation, and abolishing the detested point system used for firing employees are priorities for the members. And whereas, the members also want Wabtec to commit to working with them to push for high governmental standards that would incentivize the industry to move toward less polluting rail engines. Now therefore be it resolved, Erie City Council stands united in support of the Wabtec workers of UE 506 and UE 618 as they are not only standing up for themselves, but for the future of the City of Erie and Erie County. Discussion?
Madam, Madam. Madam Clerk, I'll be abstaining. Wabtec's my employer.
Wabtec's my employer.
Um, I just wanted to state that, you know, I'm grassroots and I stand with the workers, so it was no second thought when, you know, the opportunity to draft this was brought before me. I stand wholeheartedly with the union workers, and we need to make sure that unions are strong for the American working class. We are currently the working poor, and the only way that's going to be corrected is if we have more unions. So continue the fight, guys. I support you 100%.
I wanna jump in and say thank you to everyone who has supported those striking workers. And just a reminder that mutual aid is always possible, whether it's dropping off food or, or Gatorade, or whatever it is, some new poster board, there, there's always a way that you can, you can go beyond voting. Voting should be the bare minimum. But supporting unions and living wage jobs has to be a priority for the city of Erie. We have a median wage of $22,000 a year, which is not a family sustaining wage. So thank you to the tenacity of those on the picket lines. You are representing what makes Erie great and what we need more of.
Mr. President, I'll be voting to support this resolution. I have been a union person probably longer than I've been in management, and I believe in unions. And I think I owe 506 something. They endorsed me my first two terms when I ran for council. Another way of paying them back, how about that? Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys abstains, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. Resolution passes, yea six, nay zero, with one abstention. Resolution number three, sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Nelson, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that Erie City Council are authorizing and directing the city solicitor to explore the steps necessary to place Erie PA as a sanctuary for LGBTQIA individual, plus individuals and families on the ballot as a referendum allowing the electorate to vote on the proposal. Discussion?
Do you still want this on after we passed the last one?
Pardon me?
Do you still want this on after we passed the last one?
Yeah, I think it's... Can I speak?
Yeah.
Okay. I said when I backed Suzanne on hers, it's a matter of communication. The worst thing that could happen is still the best thing. If it goes on a ballot and it fails, at least the movement will know where you're at as far as communicating with the rest of the city. You're gonna get people who are gonna vote because they're afraid, they don't understand, maybe they're just pigheaded. But we have to reach those people too. And that, that's all this is meant to say. I mean, I agree that the seven of us said it's a good idea, but we're not the whole city of Erie. They should have some say. We should work at, and I have a problem with a public hearing where you can talk about these various things and explain on TV to the folks of what it's all about, because most people don't know. I can say that pretty sure. We want to see if we agree with something, huh? All right. But that's where I'm at with that, that's the only reason.
Mr. President, I'm, I guess, I mean, we already passed the other one. So the way number three reads to me is, we wanted that to let the city vote to say yes or no. It doesn't read like educate us on this, it reads yes or no.
Yeah.
So I mean, if we already voted yes, I mean, I don't know, seems like that would need to be reworded to fit what Mr. Brzezinski was just saying, basically.
Uh, Mr. Solicitor, I know there is some question to whether this was a legal question that could be put on a ballot. I never received confirmation one way or another, whether it was something that could go on the ballot.
I have it right here, Michael. I wanna read it. It's third-class city code. Go on the ballot, if, if the resolution passes, we designate city clerk to be the collector of signatures.
Of the signatures.
Right, and I think we have two others, 100 signatures, it goes on the ballot in November, actually, if we wanna move that quickly. I don't know if you want to. All I'm saying is, communication is the key to all of this. Now, let me tell you just one silly little story. I'm an East Side, Fourth and Wallace boy, and my mother made me go to prep. Our first JV football game was at East High. And almost half of the guys didn't wanna get out of the bus, 'cause they didn't know black kids. I'm getting off the bus, going, "Hey, Ed, how you doing?" 'Cause I grew up with them, we played ball together on the East Side, from George Lyons to Woody Thompson, all these guys. I had that kind of a background, so I'm not that scared or insensitive to what's going on here. I know everybody has their way to be, and I accept that. But it, you'd really be surprised, those guys admitted to me, I, I really never had a black friend. And you're talking guys that came from St. George's, Our Lady of Peace, you know, the money people that you guys don't like. Yeah, that's, that's, they were good people too, but they didn't have the experience that I had growing up. I don't like being poor, but I had a great experience with all those guys. And that's, that's where I'm coming from with that.
Yeah, I just have, I mean, if it's 500 signatures, it says no, and 100 to say yes, does that mean, what does that mean?
Once it goes on the ballot, 100 signatures. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking...
No, I'm just asking a que, what would, if we get 500 people to say, "Hey, we don't want it," and 100 to say, "We do want it," would the 500...
Just more news and publicity and press over it.
Okay.
I think it would be redundant.
My only aim is communication here.
Yeah, no, there'd be a lot of communication over that.
Could only be a plus.
You only need 100.
100 signatures, according to this.
And that's...
I showed it to you.
Yeah, yeah, in, in regards to ordinances, though. All right. Um, hey, if it's on November's ballot, you and Tyler are running, he's gonna have quite a, quite a turnout.
Plus, shake my, he beat me the first time, what the hell?
I think he already beat you by 1,000.
He got me the first time.
A reminder that their pronouns are they/them.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay, I just wanna add to this that we are here representing the people of Erie, correct? And so even without the lived experience of being in the queer community, you can have, you can make connection, you can have empathy. I hope everyone here loves someone who's queer. My, my concern with going the ballot measure route, which I'm curious, and the resolution does say it just directs exploring the steps, it's not actually taking, it's not actually saying we're going to do a ballot measure. My concern over it is, yes, I'm happy to have more communication, I'm happy to explore how we could have some sort of forum where our LGBTQ plus-serving organizations can share and speak and educate. But I also want to say, as a queer person, having to stand up and affirm your rights and, and speak out on your human rights is a traumatic experience. The amount of hate I have received over the last few weeks has been exhausting. The love has been more, and I, I, I just want to affirm that having to draw this out and continue it any further is going to do harm on the community it seeks to help.
Any other discussion? All right, call for the vote.
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner.
No.
Ms. Flores.
No.
Mr. Keys. Mr. Troop.
No.
No. Oh, excuse me, I'm, no, I'm, the ballot question.
Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Nelson. Motion fails by three to four.
Moving on to committee reports.
We don't do committees after 12:00. I, I move that we skip committees, 'cause it's 11:00.
We'll start with Ed. Make sure Suzanne gets the hint. Ed, do you have a committee report?
Say goodnight. Thank you.
I'll report next month.
Mike?
I'll report next month.
Mel?
No report.
Okay, I'm gonna have one little one.
I'm gonna miss your turn, I'm sorry.
You snooze, you lose, you know?
Do you go, 'cause you have basketball stuff, you wanna say?
Before we...
We, we, we have not adjourned yet, sorry.
Yeah.
This is only one sided copy, so like, you only have half the stuff.
Oh.
So just as administrative means, just...
Hey, thanks.
Okay. I just want to clarify, I will save my full committee report for our August 2nd meeting, and I hope we have as many people here. I want to share this lovely picture of Governor Shapiro and I, which was taken on Thursday, January 29th, at his home, the governor's mansion, as part of his private pride reception, where he invited LGBTQ plus mayors and elected officials, along with allies, to his home for a lovely reception in Harrisburg. As the Times article states, "I consulted him on the opportunity of Erie becoming PA's first sanctuary city. I will not speak on behalf of the governor, and it is completely reasonable that his office would not be informed of a conversation during a reception at his home. Nonetheless, I thank, I thank Governor Shapiro for his commitment to our community and his fight for passing the PA Fairness Act over the last 22 years," which has not passed yet. "It passed the PA House with bipartisan support. I wish our state senator was here, because I urge the PA Senate to do the same and pass the Fairness Act," and that's it.
I think I pretty much gave my report while I was describing how the last couple weeks of establishing an ordinance went. So, no report further beyond that. Do you have anything from the solicitor?
Nothing further from the solicitor's office, thank you.
Mayor Shember. Oh, oh, oh! Wait, sorry, sorry, sorry. We skipped over him, and I know he's actually got, he's got basketball stuff to talk.
Yeah, I have basketball stuff. We started Bayview Park yesterday. We have three teams of 10 in the 13 to 14. Unfortunately, the nine to 10-year-olds, we only had one kid show up. And as I was passing the jerseys out to the older ones, he was looking at me like, "Where's mine?" Of course, I gave it to him. So, told him to bring some more nine to tens tomorrow, and I think he had a buildup, but we have Bayview going. 19th Street is overcrowded. But everything's going well, no problem, thanks for our police force and their presence.
Thank you. And Mayor Shember.
Thanks for passing both the Chris ordinances, so we can continue to keep talking about it, and I look forward to continue to work with you and to get the best Chris ordinance we can. And I just wanted to mention to you that this Friday at 10:00 AM, I'm going to the swearing-in of 61 new Americans at our federal courthouse. That's the biggest group I've ever seen sworn in there. I've gone to everyone since I, there's 10 of those a year. And I'll tell you that I know they'll be primarily minorities, you know, people of color, people of different languages, and that's what our country is made up with, in the first place. That's what we're all the descendants of, and so I really look forward to that.
All right. With that, meeting is adjourned.